We'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022. First item on our agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Soha?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Neiman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Serone?
Here.
And Vogelsinger. I have 11 out of 14.
All right, thank you. All right, next is a reminder to please speak directly to the microphone for our recording and broadcast of this meeting. And then item three is items to be removed, editor change. Do we have anything? Nothing tonight, okay. And then item four is matters from the public. I understand we have cloud here for item not on the agenda. Come on up, use the microphone. All you have to give us is your name.
My name is Paige McLeod, and I live at 1015 McClurg in Batavia. My wife and I have been there for 17 years. I'm kind of new to city council as far as procedures and all, and so my, basically I have two questions. I've tried to find on the website, I've tried to navigate and find the process or procedure that is followed when an ordinance is adopted. I know that the final step is an ordinance goes to the city council for a vote, and prior to that, there is a public hearing, but that's about all that I know. And so I'm curious as to what the steps are that are followed in putting together an ordinance and eventually having it come to be. And if there is a written, if there's a document that I can refer to, I'd be glad to take a look at that, and that'd be my first question. What are the steps? What is the process?
Okay. First, it would be whatever the idea was or whatever we would look at, we would discuss at a committee of the whole meeting, determine if we felt like there was merit in us passing something and it would regulate that. And then we would have staff draw up an ordinance that would match that, and then we would bring it back to cow vote on it and then move it on to the city council for a final vote.
How does the, the first step, what is involved in making that happen? Do you have a request from a citizen or does the city see there's an issue?
Typically, yes, it'll either come from a citizen or it'll be something that we, you know, recognize that we need to do something about, and then, you know, we would discuss that with, within the city council and come up with the idea, and then have staff draft an ordinance. Sometimes it has to go past, you know, legal to check for legality on it before we would do something like that, but that would be the normal procedure.
How involved does a citizen like myself get in the process prior to the public here?
Depends on what it's about.
Pardon?
Depends on what it's about. Like say, for instance, just one easy one was chickens that we had when we, we wanted, people wanted to have chickens in their backyards. We had a group of citizens form, get together, bring that idea forward, bring research and other things that they did about what were the things that were good and bad about other cities ordinances in regulating that, and then we put together that ordinance and put that through.
But as far as a written document, there's nothing that I could look at where that is.
I don't know if we have anything on the website. I don't believe that we do.
Yeah, I've gone through the website, and I can get ordinances from 1955. I can go back that far, and it's interesting. Just there's no, no process listed, so.
Okay.
That's, that's that first question. And the second one is, I came to the council meeting last Monday, and there was, the last item was, when you went to executive session, it was to discuss litigation. And I'm just curious as to how many discussions, how many litigation discussions does the city right now, is it involved in?
I'm not sure if I could answer that question. I don't know that we have like a running total or anything that we keep on that.
Okay.
For them, because litigation can be
Falls in so many different
Any different things that, you know, would fall under that heading for the privacy of a executive session
Right.
For litigation discussion.
Okay, so I can assume there's at least one, and we don't know how many more are beyond that?
I don't have an, I don't have an answer for that.
The other thing to add to that is what is contemplated under the Open Meetings Act for items that can be discussed in executive session
Right.
Ating to litigation, might not actually be litigation yet. It may just have the potential that we're expecting it to become litigation as well.
Okay.
So it falls into both categories, actual and, and imminent. It has to be imminent.
Okay. All right. That's all. Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, up next is item five, which is a presentation on display letters for windows of third floor City Hall for the Albright Theater.
Sorry, I should have made that correction, that we were notified today that, that we would not have that presentation.
Okay.
They withdrew their request.
Okay. Move right on then to item six, which is a discussion on columbarium sculpture call for artists. Gary, you're going to be busy today.
I am. Earlier this year in June, the city announced a competition for artists to design a new sculpture that would sit atop the columbarium that was recently installed in the West Side Cemetery. Based on the city's past history with the bridge sculptures, we had expected that a number of artists would make submittals. As it turns out, we did only have one artist who made an official submittal by the deadline date. That artist's name is Mark Adams. He's a Batavia resident, and he does currently have several works of public art on display throughout the city. He's been creating commissioned pieces, pieces since 2016. His submission does meet the criteria that was set forth by the city, satisfies the purpose, the theme, the physical dimensions, and he has said, has demonstrated an ability to complete the piece and perform the installation. Staff is seeking direction from city council tonight as to the next steps in the process. Given that we've only had one artist make a submittal, does council desire to go out and seek additional submittals? Or given the fact that the submittal that was made meets all of the criteria, would staff want to move forward to the next step and have a scaled model made of that piece? So it's really kind of what the next steps are going to be up to city council.
Okay. Did everybody get a chance to take a look at that? And?
One remark that I would make is just to, he is the artist who did the frames for the new wayfinding signage that Main Street has installed in our downtown.
Okay, does anybody have any comments?
I always think it's better to have multiple options to choose from, especially for something that's going to be there for quite some time. Maybe put a new deadline in place just to see if anybody else has any interest at all. I mean, I'm not saying I don't have a, I'm not critical of the submission.
Right.
I just always think it's good to maybe have a few things to take a look at and consider to see other visions of other people.
I would like to see multiple. I mean, I don't know if we feel like we're going to get more submittals if we were to open it up for six more months or something, or what do we want to do?
I would think that we should do that.
How did the, how did the call for artists differ with the bridge?
No, that's the thing is we follow basically the same framework, the same, same outline. As I stated in my memo, if the council decides to go back out and solicit another call, I will try and reach out through, we had a contact at Water Street Studios, we had a contact through like a DuPage Arts Group. I'll try and reach out to those people and say, why do you think we didn't get any responses? And maybe, maybe we'll get an answer.
I'm not against trying to get more artists involved, but I do really appreciate looking through his current public art installations, how many of these are in downtown Batavia.
Yeah.
You know, he is already a very prolific artist in Batavia and obviously has a strong connection here, and I really appreciate that, too. And if I, if, at the end of the day, I mean, I would prefer to have an artist who has such grounding in Batavia do this art installation for this particular project versus somebody outside. But I'm, I'm not against if the wish of the council is to wait.
I mean, I think too, you know, this is not going to be, this will be one, I think that in the future, we may have more
Mm-hmm.
That we're going to want for, you know, future installations out there. So, you know, if we go a couple more months or something and we still don't have it, I don't have a problem with, again, I don't have any problem with the, the design that's there. I just feel like, you know, typically, if we only have one choice, that just, to me is, it's not really a choice then. Okay, I think at this point I get my direction then. Yeah, and, you know, maybe we, we reach out to see if there's other avenues or other places we could find
Yep.
You know, that we could at least advertise with, try to get more submissions.
Certainly.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Gary. All right, up next is item seven, which is a presentation on the census update from Mike Kamen, our GIS analyst. Welcome, Mike.
A little high. So hello, thank you for having me. Let me just get situated.
As, as Mike joins us today, I'd like to just point out, as a GIS specialist, he's part of our information systems department, and while that's the department that he's in, he works for and with all of the departments throughout our city and has provided many useful maps, both for the city to provide to our residents, but also with other organizations within our community. Most recently, he worked with Britta McKenna's group to create an, an art map of our downtown. So today, Mike is going to talk about the work that he does for us with regard to the census.
I'm not sure it's shared, because last time I didn't share it.
I need to stop share.
Oh.
And that way, you can share.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, with the art one, I went through the whole presentation and no one could see it. I've learned.
You're sharing.
Can everyone see it?
Yep.
Okay. Yet again, thank you for having me. I'm Mike Kamen, I'm the city's GIS analyst. With that being, I do all the mapping for the city, basically. The, we take in data, we publish it out, we've got power users, we've got a lot of people feeding into the system, so this is not just my work, this is a community effort. I'm just the one that put it all together and make it look nice today. So 2022 census update, as everyone know, can I go next slide? Sorry. So as everyone knows, 2020, we had our census. They do it every 10 years. This last census was a little bit interesting, to say the least. As you can note from the slide, our population in 2010 was, with the census, was 26,045. The most recent census came in at 26,098. Yeah, I'm going to show why I think that number is a little bit off through some of the analysis I've done. The census work itself began in 2019. Before the census starts, they send us data sets to go through, an address list that we bring into the system compared to our own address base, that I then compare against our residential properties, combine it all into one and say, here's all the addresses you're missing, and they're usually missing at least a couple hundred. Then the other thing we bring in is our boundary layer, so our corporate limits, and look at what do our corporate limits show as an institution versus what is the census telling them, telling us that it is? We rectify it, send it off. It's a multi-organizational, departmental project to do the census. We had the library involved, we had a lot of outside the city agencies helping us as well. Internally, we had community development, admin, basically everyone was involved. It was a huge project. I keep wanting to hit spacebar, sorry. So, a little bit of recap, though. In 2010, the census appeals process was quite a bit different than our current one. With the 2010, we were allowed to do an audit of individual, individual addresses, and so what would happen is they would send us a complete address list, that being the census. I would bring them into our system, compare what their addresses said that they collected at versus what we had known as being residential addresses in the city. I ended up making 800 appeals at that time, and thankfully, because of that, we picked up quite a bit of population. Each address missed was a unique appeal record, and then we also did a boundary review at the same time, just to make sure that they hadn't missed anything. So. So for 2020, they changed things up a little bit on us. So now it's called the Census Count Question Resolution Operation, or CQR. CQR operation gives government units the opportunity to request that a census bureau review of their boundaries and or housing counts to identify errors. It does not collect new data or conduct a recount, so that's one big difference between 2010 and 2020. In 2010, they did affect, it did affect population. 2020, we can't affect the population count that they've given us. Only if errors are found will housing and population counts be corrected, and the revised council will be redistributed. Right now, having gone through everything, as I'll show in future slides, we can't really have anything that they missed outside of data collection issues. Per federal law, Census Bureau can update the 2020 census results through CQR operation or any other operation. So the census type, or the, I'm sorry, the CQR types that we're allowed to make for the census are boundary cases, so thinking of that would be our, you know, city boundaries or housing count cases. And with the housing counts, we're going census block by census block and looking at how many homes they had with the census versus what we had in our own system. You can set it up to submit both, boundary and housing count cases, or one or the other. So what I found, with our, with our boundary status, based on the January 1st deadline, their boundaries look good. Every year, we do an annual digital boundary agreement survey, where we take into effect annexations, adjustments in our corporate limits to make things look right. And over the last 10 years, between 2010 and 2020, we've been very diligent about getting the data in well before the deadline, and because of that, their boundaries are perfect for us, which is a good thing. The one issue that we came across with our count being so nominal was vacancies in the city. We have about 10,000 residential units. We found at least 425 were listed as vacant in the count. If you can see on the map here, anywhere in red, they were saying we're over 75% vacant. So there's some definite areas of concern why they would go through an area and just have zero feedback. Anywhere in the green, which is the large part, as you can see, that was pretty well counted, but we do have a large swaths of our city that were showing as having vacancies. With having around 425, that's almost 5% of our total housing stock was listed as vacant. That could be from people not sending in their, their cards, not doing the online, or just not answering the doors when the Census Bureau came around. So. In addition to that, we were also looking at the residential property counts, going back to the earlier slide, talking about how we can look at our boundaries, and then also the actual housing count per parcel, or for, sorry, census block. With that, they did a pretty good job doing the count of the actual houses. Out of 500-plus houses, I flagged 50 as being undercounted by the census initially, and then I had to go through by hand and look at, okay, if a census block said it had eight here for houses, and the one next to it had 12, but we knew it was only 10, you know, mathematically, we'd figure, okay, that's okay. You know, the key for this was looking at where did they truly undercount us? So after looking for that information, they did a fairly good job. They've only got six blocks that they undercounted, for a total of 11 missing houses across the whole housing inventory. So keep in mind, this isn't vacancies, this is in the census blocks themselves what they missed. So I will be submitting this in the coming week, and will actually be the first municipality in the state of Illinois to submit their CQR update. So, and like I said, this won't affect our count, it's just getting them to have better data for the future. Next up, they also have a census group quarters review. This was actually just announced last month. We're starting to look, well, I'm starting to look at the details now. This allows us to review the group quarter counts. Yet again, does not count as a recount of the 2020 census. Group quarters are people living in an atypical household-type living arrangement. Think nursing homes, memory care, over at Holy Cross, the clergy, group homes, things like that. That is what we have for group quarters. It also can count as universal, our university housing, residential treatment centers, correctional facilities, we don't have those in the city. So this is the current project I'm working on with the census to look at what we have, reaching out to those organizations and saying, hey, you know, as of April 1st, 2020, what were your counts? Because if we realize that, hey, they undercounted, they skipped a building, in the 2010 census, we ran into an issue where they had a nursing home where they just skipped it, you know, and that could be a lot of population for the city. It's important for the city because for every resident we have, we get about $187 a year in tax revenue. With the, so without being able to do a recount of the current census, we are allowed to do a special census. They haven't released yet the details on it. They usually start up two years after the census. With this most recent census and COVID and everything, it's delayed a little bit. Currently looking at 2023 to allow us to do one. So far through my analysis, I am seeing that we've got quite a few population centers that just weren't part of the count. Prairie Commons, which was 200-plus units that weren't built yet. Windmill Manor, which was 80 beds. The Landings, which had 140 residents potentially there. Winding Creek, the new subdivision that's just breaking ground now, that's 160 units. Things like Tanglewood Unit 5. And a conservative estimate, just knowing those unit counts, I'm thinking at least 500 to 1,000 new residents through a special census, and at $187 a head, we're looking at potentially between $90,000 to $200,000 in tax revenue every year added from doing a special census. Like I said, we can't do one until 2023. They don't have the costs associated yet, but I personally think it would be a, a pretty good idea to do, because if we hit that 1,000 level, over the next seven years, that's over, well over a million dollars the city will be able to collect because of that. This map yet again shows the vacancy areas in the red, and then in the hash mark, like up on Hawks Drive, you can see other areas where we had a, you know, either they weren't ready for occupancy, or they had no residents yet. Those are the areas that I would suggest we target first. And obviously, over the next year and a half, with other developments possibly coming to the city, we could expand it. So still reviewing multifamily and group quarter counts, as I mentioned. Single-family counts are complete. Overall, minus the vacancy issue, I think census did a good job versus 2010 in actually getting out there and collecting information. And then we're still working on further analysis of areas to target for special census. That's what I have. Does anyone have any questions or thoughts?
Yeah, I would certainly like to make a couple. Number one, I strongly suggest we pick up on his recommendation that we do a special census. I think we're going to find quite a few new, new faces, new heads out there. Just for the rest of the council, so you understand the shenanigans that have gone in, and we are not part of the shenanigans, so I'm taking our man here and giving him praise because he's done a nice job. But going back maybe 40 years ago, in the history of Kane County, with not the 2010, I think it was maybe the 1990 census, there was a big row going on in Kane County because Kane County wanted somebody to annex the Cougar Stadium and bring that into a unified area with sewer and water and whatever have you. And to come to find out, the folks in Geneva had a very, very difficult time that they didn't want to have within their city limits a landfill or a dump. They totally disavowed that. So they asked that the boundary agreement between Batavia and Geneva goes right down Fabian Parkway, so the landfill is clearly in Geneva's territory. But they asked the Kane County Board to agree, and apparently they did, although there aren't a lot of documents that confirm this, that they would proclaim that the landfill on Fabian Parkway is in the city of Batavia. If you don't believe me, I invite you to go out to the landfill. You have to get through the gate and go up. You start going up the road there, and there's a big sign there that says, "Welcome to Settlers Hill Landfill, Batavia, Illinois." And then if you get on the top of it, there's another sign that says, "Welcome to Settlers Hill Landfill, Batavia, Illinois." Well, there ain't nothing Batavia about it, but the deal was, is that we were going to, Batavia was going to take that dump and landfill, and Geneva didn't want that on their face. And so lo and behold, in the last census, and you may remember this, the Kane County jail got built, and suddenly out in the Kane County jail, there was almost 400 people incarcerated out there. And so the federal census people come around and they see the signs, "Welcome to the Settlers Hill Landfill, Batavia, Illinois." So they gave Batavia, I think in the 2010, about 400, over 400 people credit. Then suddenly, Geneva raised a holy hell about it because they were losing 400 people and that $100, $187. So then they came back and asked for a recount of that area and asked that it be transferred, that the jail be brought back into Geneva as a count. So I had quite a conversation with the then mayor of Geneva about this. I said, you know, it's your town, you know, what, what do you, what these signs up there? Well, we just don't like the idea that people say that we're, have a dump in our town. So I said, well, that's the way it is. So they did get the change. We had a, we had, if you look at the original census, we had about 400 more people than they subsequently in the end transferred them over to Geneva. And so then I wrote a letter, I could probably show you, to the county board at the time and said, I, this is obvious, this is wrong, would you please take the signs down? I don't think the signs are down, I think they're still up there. And that just kind of shows you some of the silliness that goes in on this thing. But if you look at how we can only grow 53 people in 10 years, and you look at Tanglewood Unit 5 out there is 56 units, I think, and they're certainly, and they're all built now, there's more than 56 people living in those, those units. And then certainly down on South Kirk Road at, I guess we call that Kirk Road Commons or Batavia Commons, there's 242 attached townhouses there, now of which they tell me they've sold them all. Not all of them are built, but they, they're, they're growing. So, you know, you just add those two numbers together, and you've got well over 300 new living units that are in Batavia that have occurred during between 2010 and 2020. So I, there, there's just some dancing around here with this thing. And then I go into my roles in Chicago, and this is a very common subject amongst the cities in the area about this whole census count. And the story we get is, is that the former president didn't like the Census Bureau, so he yanked down their budget significantly, and they didn't have all the things they needed to go ahead and count the people the way they should. So I don't know, you know, I don't know where all this goes. Nobody wants to put an official story on paper, but I really think we should do the special census, given what I know has been the shenanigans that has been in the face of Batavia.
Yeah, Illinois as a whole, they just announced was undercounted by over 2%, so I figure even for us, that adds up quite a bit. The other thing that affected the census was a term called, it's differential privacy. And what that basically was, is a, is a push to make the census data on the block level less apparent to who lived there, so you couldn't identify individual users. The problem with that is they ended up diluting the actual statistical usage of the data at even a municipal level. For example, not in our city, thankfully, but there are other cities out there that I've talked to where they'll have a census block with 20 homes, and it's listed as having 50 children living there with no adults. And they did this to basically make it, like I said, dilute the, the chances of saying, oh, you know, I see eight houses, you know, four adults, I know who's living where, so.
Well, thank you for all the information. I think we definitely, as soon as it's available to us, I think we do what we have to do to get the special census done and get what rightly ours back to us.
Sounds good.
Will there be an expense with that?
Yeah, I'm sure there will be.
The last time it cost between $55,000 and $60,000, as I remember.
So if, even, even
Numbers, we could stand a game, far exceed that.
Right.
Far exceed that, yeah.
Yeah, there's other organizations that have done them in the past where they've run half a million dollars to do it, but at the end of the day, it's still worth it because they picked up like even 2,000 people, and at the $187 per head, per year, over seven years, it easily pays for itself. I think it's like 685 people to break even, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect, thanks.
All right. Up next is item eight, approval of a Class A liquor license for the Geneva Winery LLC located at 5 through 9 North River Street, Batavia.
I'm going to step out, huh? I'm going to step out, huh?
Okay. Let the record reflect that Alderman Beck has left the proceedings. And Alderman Chansett?
Give me one second. So the police department did conduct an investigation and background check. It was determined whether the Geneva Winery located at 5 to 7 North River Street and the owner, manager, Brandon Kump, said would be suitable to receive a liquor license. Required documents were submitted, and the department found that there would be no reason to preclude them from receiving a license. Is the applicant available tonight?
No.
And I would move that we approve this liquor license and invite the applicant to a council meeting.
Second.
Motion and second, any additional discussion? Clerk, please hold the roll.
Sorry, who is the second?
Sharon.
Thank you. Chansett?
Aye.
Sova?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck absent. Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried 10 to 0.
All right, thank you. And let the record reflect, Alderman Beck has returned to the meeting. Item number nine, motion to approve the sale of excess land at the northwest corner of Batavia Avenue and West Wilson Street. This is a parcel we've talked about several times. This went out for bid, and the bid was opened, was for $5,840 by Batavia Commercial Real Estate, 145 First Street, Batavia. That was the one and only bid on it, and so now we just have to accept this if we so choose to sell this property, which we've been talking about doing. And then we'll need a two-thirds vote at the city council to pass that. Does anybody have any questions? Comments? Okay, we'll get this one wrapped up then. I'll make the motion that we recommend a council approval of sale of excess land at the northwest corner of Batavia Avenue and West Wilson Street.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Malay. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
And Sova?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
Okay. Thank you. All right, up next is item 10, ordinance 22-40, annexing properties on Hart Road, Meadow Drive, Sunset Drive. This would be a voluntary annexation petition from these property owners. Get this to load. Okay. This is one I think that we've talked about before, so the properties included in this annexation would be 2 South 303, 2 South 327, 2 South 337, 2 South 357, 2 South 431, 2 South 330, 2 South 352, and 2 South 366 Hart Road. 34 West 884 and 34 West 931 Sunset Drive, and 2 South 375 Meadow Drive. None of these properties currently are on city utilities, although water is available to all the properties. Sewer and electric are only immediately available to some of the parcels. And then we would also get jurisdiction over our section of Hart Road and part of Meadow Drive and Sunset Drive as part of this annexation. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Is there anything I left out, Scott?
No, you covered it all.
Okay. This is one of those nice ones where it is a voluntary one, where everybody does see the benefit of moving into the city. How many more properties do we have over in that section, Scott?
In this particular section, there's additional, I believe it's seven properties.
Okay.
And then there's another series of properties that's north of this that will be a future, we have not contacted those property owners yet, but that'll be a future one that we'll be doing. But for the involuntary that will be following up with this, I think it's seven properties that are left.
Maybe we can get those all done before we do this special census.
That's the goal.
Okay. All right, if there are no further questions, Abby?
A few of the, the annexation agreements had some handwriting at the bottom that said, so long as the annexation agreement can be worked out between petitioner and the city of Batavia, were there special considerations for a few of these, Scott?
Yes, those are the two that we had annexation agreements, which we approved previously. So the one at 2 South 303 and 2 South 327 and 337, those were the two annexation agreements we approved at prior city council meetings. So those have already been resolved.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other comments? I will make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance 22-40, annexing properties on Hart Road, Meadow Drive, and Sunset Drive.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Malay. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
And Sova?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
All right, thank you. And then item number 11, which is resolution 2285-R, authorizing purchase of one Sutfin fire engine pumper. Alderman Rosado?
Yes. The fire department is authorized in the 2022 capital budget to purchase a new fire engine and pumper for $700,000.
Mike, we can, Mike, we can barely hear you.
Yeah, okay. Can you hear me now?
It's a little better.
Okay. Yes, the fire department is authorized in the 2022 capital budget to purchase a new fire engine pumper for $700,000.
Mike, we can, Mike, we can barely hear you.
Yeah, okay. Can you hear me now?
It's a little better.
Okay. Yes, the fire department is authorized in the 2022 capital budget to purchase a new fire engine pumper for $700,000. I believe Chief Hanson is here to present.
Chief, say a few words on this one.
Yes, thank you all. We're proposing to purchase an actual identical fire engine to the one that was just purchased or just received and brought to you guys a few months ago. We purchased that back in 2000 to replace a aging 24, well, at the time it was 22-year-old engine and became 24-years-old at that time. We currently have another engine in our fleet that's at 21-years, almost 22-years. Current production time for engines is about two to three years, actually. The committee, made up of members of the department, have recommended, after receiving this engine, utilizing it for a period of about 90 days, as you're aware, and having good success, feeling confident with this engine, have proposed to purchase a duplicate engine of the, of this engine that you were able to, some of you were able to view. And unfortunately, there's been a little bit of a price increase over that two years. But by purchasing it now, we can avoid some additional increases that are coming up and also take advantage of a reduced production time by going to their Philadelphia, Pennsylvania plant because they actually have a greater workforce there at this time. So we're asking that the committee support this resolution and approve this purchase of this new heavy-duty custom pumper for $693,958.41, or basically $693.959, sorry.
If we purchase this now, that locks in the price, right?
Correct.
It's not going to be subject to every two, three months, they're not going to hit us with another price increase before it's delivered?
No, we do have a contract and proposal, which was given to us August 11th, which is good for 30 days.
Okay.
So the, the idea behind this is if we can get it approved here, the cow today and bring it to council on the September 6th, we can have it, you know, signed and.
No, another heavy-duty truck purchases, that's been something that started to happen now, is that if you don't have the contract signed and commit to it, they're just going to keep raising the fee by the time it's delivered.
Right, and we're seeing that, as you know, Alderman, in many of the industries now. They won't even, some of them won't even quote you a price. They will, they will give you a estimate, and then you'll purchase, they give you a purchase price as they get closer to final production. In this particular case, we were able to use the HGAC cooperative to get a lower bidding price, which was still locked in from last year, goes through October. We were able to take advantage of the bidding from last October. So part of that was some of the savings in this year's price, and that's why you're seeing an increase in the latter part of September for that HGAC bid prices.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Nick?
Which, which budget will this affect?
We had a discussion this morning and with Peggy on how we're going to do it. It's actually in this year's 2022 capital purchase. So what we would do is sign the contract, agree to it, and then it would be rolled each year for two years until the 2024 budget. We do, and I didn't have the chance to do it, most companies are not allowing a pre-purchase reduction price. They used to do that if you purchase in advance. I did contact Sutfin today, and they are considering a prepayment discount, which would bring it out of this year's budget, but we would have to discuss that obviously at a finance level to see if it's worth.
May have asked you, asked you this at the, the push-in of the one we just purchased, but what is the life expectancy of this engine?
Currently, life expectancies for our engines are approximately 20 years. That, that was established about 10 years ago when we were seeing approximately half the run volume we are currently seeing. We may see, you know, a reduction in that overall lifespan as we are currently pressing almost 4,500 calls this year. So we, we are seeing greater service with them. This particular company is offering us a five-year bumper-to-bumper and a 10-year mechanical warranty on it, so that will help expand it. We look at, in our proposals and our replacement program, in putting them on frontline, minimal of 10 to 15 years, and then rolling them back into reserve, which increases the lifespan and reduces the wear and tear on the vehicle.
And I'm new to this conversation, I'm assuming, just like regular vehicles, there's different levels of quality. Like, I'm just curious where this falls in quality of engines.
This is considered a higher quality, this is under a category of custom pumper. You can have pre-made chassis, which are utilized for other vehicles, dump trucks, utility vehicles and stuff, and they put a, either a standard body on it, or you can move up to higher levels, custom-type vehicles, which you can actually spec, as we did 99 pages of, for specific features such as a heavier frame, larger engine, larger drivetrain, things that'll, and greater suspension that'll give you more lifespan going with those heavier aspects and products, which most of the engineers or mechanics and things can tell you. By going to the custom level and adding features which have greater life expectancy and stance, that gives us a little bit more utilization.
Yeah, they, you know, I went through this before we bought the latter truck and kind of looked at the procedures that they were using for that, and they really look at it from a bunch of different perspectives within the department before they spec these out to purchase these. Because not only do they want to have them serviceable and usable the way they want to, but they also think about how long that's going to last, and do they have to go learn a whole new style of truck because they have to replace it every decade? Or do they want to keep the same truck for 20 years? Go a little bit bigger, go a little bit heavier duty, more of a custom product that they get, that they know is going to last that much longer? And they really do take good care of them, so.
And the advantage, as he touched on, part of the spec on this is it's an aluminum body, so it reduces the rust, an aspect with a corrosion-proof frame, an aspect which has warranty, and Alderman Wolf just indicated, our truck, which was purchased in 2006, we just had the frame recoded, needled, as they call it, so they went in to redo it to give us an additional five years of service time on it. Because we're running into the same problem, while it's due up in two years for replacement, it's taking on trucks three years to replace it. So once we achieve that aspect in our capital replacement program, the cost is escalating at a point that we won't even actually have the funds available in the capital, in the projected capital improvement, plus we need to add the longevity to it. So these are items that we have been able to build into and features to add extended service life when necessary. And having the duplicate or twin will allow both stations to have the same type of vehicle, so as personnel move from station to station or have to fill in or come in, they will know, both engines being identical, they'll know how to operate both of them seamlessly and without confusion. Adding greater safety for our guys.
Any other discussion? If no other discussion, I will make a motion to move to city council, resolution 22085, authorizing the purchase of one Sutfin fire engine pumper.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Clerk, please call row.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Sova?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
And Miller?
Aye.
Thank you for your support.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
Thank you.
Right, thank you, chief. Up next would be item 12, ordinance 2241, amending Title 8, Chapter 1, Article B of the municipal code related to extension costs and electric fees. Alderman Chansett?
So we have some new hires in the department, and they were tasked with going through some policy and procedure that did include a review of fee structures, and it looks like it had been since 2014, since some of the numbers have been increased for things like labor and material rates. So as you saw from Gary's memo, there is a table showing previous costs and what the new proposed costs are set to be. Gary, how, where did?
1930.
What was, I guess, the biggest, the biggest increase that we're going to get pushed back from?
I could jump in, thank you, Alderman Chansett. Yes, we do have proposed fee increases, and we are also looking to modify the language related to extension costs. So back in the 90s, as the city was booming with development, one development would come in after another development, and the second development would be dependent upon the first development. There was just, as growth happens, there were a lot of different scenarios that would play out during a high-growth period. We're no longer in that mode, we're basically a built-out community, and we're now doing some redevelopments, and we do have isolated new developments, but they're not one development after another development after another. So staff and gentlemen asked earlier tonight how we go about ordinance revisions. Sometimes they come, we identify certain issues and bring them to council then for your consideration. Tonight's ordinance is one of those circumstances where we are bringing forth the issue of extension costs and electric fees, because they kind of go hand-in-hand. Tonight's ordinance is one of those circumstances where we are bringing forth the issue of extension costs and electric fees because they kind of go hand in hand. Staff is recommending that we modify the language related to extensions. And as, again, to the process, we present a redline version, which shows the existing code language, redlined, obviously, with revisions, followed by a clean version, which shows what staff is proposing for the ordinance to look like. And we're proposing to change the language so that customers who request an electric extension or an electric service, that they are responsible for 100% of the cost of, of that work. There's been several times still this year that we've come to you with contract awards, and we've notified you that this is 100% reimbursable work. So when we're, there's restaurants on Randall Road, there's an industrial building. Earlier this year, we came to you, contract was awarded. Basically, the developer's paying for all that work. That's kind of been our practice, and that's why we're trying to revise the language to, and it always was a city's practice. Again, we're just kind of taking the multiple scenarios and boiling them down now into, into this one scenario. That said, we also have conditions in our existing code that we want to keep in there because there are certain considerations where we may want to do cost sharing. I'll go back 10 years, when Rubicon came in, and they were going to be a 20-megawatt customer, and they ended up being a 10-plus megawatt customer while they were here. So they were a huge customer. That type of customer is good for every single electric utility rate payer because that customer was, was bearing a lot of costs. And so the city said at that time, you know, it'd be good for us to share in some of the, some of the extension costs in order to bring that big customer in. We've done other agreements with other companies over the years for cost sharing, and so we wanted to keep that in here. We don't want to make 100% every single scenario. We want to be able to have that option should a customer come along that would be in the mutual best, you know, best benefit for the overall city and utility. So that's the extension language revisions. Again, redline and clean versions aren't here. And I'll pause there before I hop back to the fee schedule.
Anybody have any questions? Yeah, I, I'll make one comment in here. I saw it was pretty, I knew it was a lot of multiples to go from an overhead line to an underground line. I didn't think it was almost, you know, four times as much.
So on the fee schedule, yes. Yeah, and, and, and so there are a couple of things here. First of all, the, the increases are, are large because they haven't been touched for eight years now. And admittedly, we are looking at these increases in today's context. During our staff meeting today, I reported that the backyard green box transformer, so a transformer that serves 10 houses. Right now, the lead time on those is three years. So, I mean, supply constraints are, are real right now, and as are costs. And so we will, you know, pledge to review these year by year so that we don't have a huge, you know, one-time bump like we're proposing right now. The cost difference between the overhead and underground, we take a typical residential, you know, lot, a typical overhead lot, a 120-foot depth lot or, you know, 80 feet wide, and they, they calculate what it takes to bring in overhead, and they calculate what it takes to bring in underground, the wire, the conduit, labor and material. That's what's behind these costs. They just use our in-house linemen. Every house is a little different, but this is meant to be the generic one that, that, you know, we use for every single house. Meter, meter, our labor rates have gone up, the meter fee, and again, the onsite costs for service installations, as I just was speaking about.
Okay. Is any other questions? Anybody online have any comments? Alderman Chantet, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we send Ordinance 22-41, amending Title VIII, Chapter 1, Article B of the municipal code related to extension costs and electric fees.
Second.
Motion second. Any additional discussion? Frank, Clerk, please call Row.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi? Malley?
Aye.
Ewer? Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
Okay, thank you. All right, up next, we have the City Hall, a whole list of, I think, six items. So we're going to start this off, I think, and do, go through the presentation on all of this together, and then we'll go back through each individual one. All right, Dan, you good with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Then we don't have to have staff.
I was going to ask if you, if you would mind helping facilitate because you're present.
We don't have to have staff aerobics with people jumping up and down for every one.
Thank you.
Do it all at once. Okay. Go ahead.
I'd like to start really kind of benefit of the public, kind of how the city's budget is set up. We have a general fund, and the general fund is supported primarily by taxes and fees. Then we have enterprise funds, which are the utility funds. Those are your water, wastewater, and electric, and those are supported by utility rates. So people get their electric bills and whatnot. Under the general fund, there are, there are different funds. There's a street fund, there's a police department, a fire department fund. There's also this, what we call our building capital fund. So the building capital fund was established by the city several years ago in order to specifically track expenditures related to capital expenses for our facilities, our buildings. We have known, well, those of you who have been around long enough, known that this remodeling project at City Hall has been talked about for years now. And so we've slowly been building up the reserves in the building capital fund in order to ultimately fund this remodeling project. We knew that we did not have enough money in for, from a cash flow perspective for 2022, so we always knew that we're going to need additional funds in 2023. What we probably didn't anticipate, as we planned five years ago, was the pandemic and the supply chain and the labor constraints and all of the other issues we're currently dealing with. So we are, as we'll talk about here later on with the other items, we are looking at projects which have come in over what we had budgeted for in 2022. So it is necessary, if we want to go forward, to transfer funds from the general fund reserve into this kind of sub-fund, if you will, which is the building capital fund. We do have monies in the general fund reserves. Peggy points out in her memo that the sales tax receipts for the 21, 2021 ending receipts were $1.5 million higher than budget. And so far this year, we're trending towards about $1 million. Luckily, people are out buying things. So we are getting more sales tax, which, again, general fund is supported by taxes. So those revenues are going to the general fund. We do have sufficient reserves to be able to make a transfer into the building capital fund. We want to do it now, just as a, a matter of good financial practices. This way, when we award a contract, we can say that we have the money in the account in order to award it. We do have other options. We could transfer the funds next year and wait, wait and do them next year, or we could actually borrow the funds. But as Peggy says in her memo, it's probably not recommended to pay interest in borrowing money when we do have money already in our reserves. So we are, as part of the first resolution that I'll, I'll jump into, that would be 22090. That's going to be the resolution to authorize a budget amendment, which will transfer funds from the building, from the general fund to the building capital fund. That's in the amount of 1.4 million. So I'll stop there, but I'll keep going to the other items before you guys jump in and vote on it.
Anybody have any questions or comments? I'll just say, from a kind of historical perspective, we've been talking about this at least a decade of what we were going to do when, when we really had to update this building, if we're going to stay here and separate it from the police department and make things safer. And that became even more and more apparent as, you know, the last couple of years have shown. I think it's something that we have really known about and wanted to plan for, but then we just kept putting it off. And I think, especially now, I think it's time we, we have to do this and not push it off again. You know, the money is there, we should just get it done. It's not going to get any cheaper because it's more money than it was when we first started discussing it. A lot more money.
Almost twice.
Anybody else has any other comments?
I would agree with you. Let's do it before it's triple.
Yeah.
Because the, the whole time I've been on the council, we've been talking about this.
Yeah, and it's not like we have to go out and get structural steel or anything, but there are going to be supplies and things that we need that are probably going to have a long lead time to get some of the stuff done. So we should get going on it.
So I want to jump into the scope, again, for the benefit of the general public. In order to improve security in the building, we will be creating two distinct public lobbies. The north lobby will be, become a lobby exclusively for the, I almost said fire department, but exclusively for the police department. People who interact with the police department will be able to come in the north doors, and that lobby, they will not be able to get into the south lobby from inside the building. They could go back outside, but not from inside the building. From, then the south lobby will consist of utility billing, community development for building permits, receptionist. And if people need to come upstairs to have a meeting, they will be, have to be escorted by staff in order to come upstairs. They will no longer, I can't remember the times, Laurie, you work in the building. I can't remember the amount of times where you walk down the hallway upstairs and there's just people walking down the hallway. You have no idea who they are. And so we're cutting, kind of cutting all that out and isolating those floors from the general public. We'll also be doing bathrooms on the third floor, which will benefit both city staff and the Albright Theater folks. The old staircase in the police department lobby is going away. A new staircase will be built kind of just south of the lobby doors down there. That'll go all the way up to the third floor. This work is planned to be completed in two phases. We will be shifting staff around during the process, but they'll all remain in the building. Right now, it's anticipated that we will start construction. There'll be, I'll jump into the next memo so I can kind of do these both comprehensively. Being an old historic building, in this room, you can look straight up and see the timber framing. But obviously, when you walk out into the hallway, you see a drop ceiling. So that drop ceiling sits lower than the old timber framing, and there's a, there's a void space up there. That void space is sprinkler, but that void space is also the original, kind of the original, well, I wouldn't say original, this is 1900s building, but some version of, older version of the building, and it has lead paint. So the beams and the flooring in those spaces have lead paint on them. There's also in the drywall mud, it's certain areas throughout the building, vintage drywall mud that had asbestos in it. And there are some areas of flooring that had asbestos in it. So prior to the start of the remodeling project, as we go through the phases, we'll also have to have an environmental abatement project, and that's a specialized contractor who will come in and take care of those things I just told you about. He will, he will both kind of clean and encapsulate the lead paint and then remove the asbestos-bearing items from the walls and the floor. That's a separate contract, and those are specialized contractors and specialized licensing. That contractor will make the rooms clean. That will then allow the general contractor to come in and do their work. So I think we'll take those two projects together if you have any question on those. All right. Then the next set of resolutions comes the building automation system. We have, all of you have sat in this room. You come in here in the middle of summer when it's blazing hot, this room is hot. In the wintertime, this room's cold. That's because the thermostat sits in that room, which is completely isolated from this room, and the thermostat's not smart, so it doesn't know that we're all showing up here at 7 o'clock on a Tuesday evening. That kind of, that's just one example, but that example occurs throughout this entire building. The thermostats only go up and down if somebody stands in front of them pressing the buttons. So as, you know, we go upstairs right now, and everybody went home at, you know, 5, 6 o'clock tonight, those thermostats are all still, you know, set up for occupancy. So a building automation system will address those things. We have 11 different rooftop units at the government center. The system has been cobbled together over the years, a lot of different improvements and, and changes. And doing a building automation system will just try and pull it all together and bring it up to modern standards so we can control all of these things in a smart manner that will save, save energy consumption and also ultimately reduce maintenance costs. The building automation system that we're recommending is coming through Train, and it actually has pricing through the State of Illinois Cooperative Purchasing Contract. So it's like, it's a, it's like we use purchased vehicles. There's no need to waive bidding because the bidding has already occurred and that this is, this price is through a bid price through the State of Illinois. I'll stop on that one.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is there any idea of what a payback would be with that automation? Or is it just anecdotal?
I will find that out. I don't have that off the top of my head, and I don't know if you may even know.
Yeah, got to use the mic. Hi. Can I bring this a little lower? Lane Allen, Allen and Peppa Architects. It's been a long time coming, so we're very excited. The, the thing is that the Train system and the controls is being purchased through the State of Illinois. So the, the question isn't really pertinent because, you know, you've got it, you're getting a great deal on it. There's, the mechanical system, what's nice about the design, it's very surgical. There are existing VAV, variable air volume units, which are being replaced, but the ductwork itself is all in place. And then because we're taking out the, the ceilings, we're replacing the grills. So it's all a very surgical effort. So I, but I think the, the, when we realized that Train was going to be providing all of the controls that, and the, and how the contractor is working with Train, those were all negotiated in the course of the bidding. And Scott, I actually had Scott write a specific letter on it to make sure that the owner was clear in their own mind what was going on. So we've, we've got good connectivity here and good communication, and it's all been worked through in the bidding process. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, but I, I was just curious with, with the automation, if we're going to see, I mean, I assume we're going to see some savings.
Yeah.
Because of the efficiencies and the intelligence in managing the thermostats, like you said, those examples and things like that. So I'm, I'm assume we will, but it's hard to quantify.
I think what's frustrating is that, how much money you've been wasting by not having it. And any building like this, you really want a BAS system. And it's, and Kevin Maloney's been, was very helpful in articulating, you know, all the pieces of the puzzle. And so I think it's more, how much have you lost by not having it? Would be the real, proper way of thinking about it. We could look at what costs were the last five years or something and compare them, you know, to the next year or two after we get it done, get an idea how good it works.
No, when we replaced our 20-year-old furnace, it was, you could definitely see the savings.
Peggy wanted me to mention too, that as part of our franchise agreement with Nycor for this building, we get free therm, so it's free gas. And the electric utility is very competitive, we all know that, so the electric utility. It is. So, no, I, I, I'll also follow up with Scott because Scott's been doing the research on the Train side and see if we can come up with any more definitive answers.
And because we're trying to look at all of our projects globally at the city as they relate to the greatest region compact and the climate action plan, lowering our energy usage period contributes to that.
The last resolution that you will consider tonight has to do with the rooftop fall protection. On the single level, on the north end of the building, we already have a fall protection system in place. The construction of the north building is different type of construction than this building. Obviously, this building is a timber frame. I don't know how many of you have been on the third floor, but when you go on the third floor, there are wooden rafters and wooden... floor, there are wooden rafters and wooden columns, and it is a unique structure trying to do a fall constraint, fall restraint system. We only received one bid. We do not know if that's a competitive bid. We're simply recommending that the bids be rejected because we only received one bid. It's a unique system, and our hope is that by rebidding, we can get more bidders interested later on this year. We did have five potential bidders present at the pre-bid meeting, so we do think that others out there will be interested. So it's, it's not that we don't like this company, and it's not that we don't like their bid, but this case, we just only have one bid, so we're recommending to not award that contract. I'm going to turn over to Alderman Wolf, all the resolutions for your consideration.
Allen?
Yes.
A quick question about that. Do we know why there were no more bids put in this time around?
We don't know why. It's, it's, that's why we want to go back out again and see if we can get more. It could be just people are busy right now. Just bidding at a different time of year. We find that with our other projects. Sometimes when you bid projects a certain time of year, you'll get a lot of interest, and then sometimes you don't get much interest.
Yeah, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, but that project can be done at any stage during remodeling work here.
Yes.
Right? It's not dependent on other things being done before we do that.
Yep.
So I think that's good, and try to do it again, try to catch the, the market at the right time when they have people available and, and time available to do something like that. So that may be what it is.
Maybe Mark Adams could sculpt something. He seems to come forward.
Not sure that I'm really worried about what it looks like, just as long as it works and it's safe.
Okay. Alderman Chantet, do you want to make motions on these?
I do. I do indeed. One second, let me grab the list.
Okay.
Start with ordinance 22-41. I'm sorry, 20?
90. Item 14.
22-90, R authorizing a budget amendment for the transfer to the building capital fund.
Second, Serone.
Motion on the second, any additional discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayassi?
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer? Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Ann Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to zero.
We have 22-86, R authorizing execution of a contract with Light Construction, Inc. for the government center interior and exterior remodeling.
Second.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion on the second, any additional discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayassi?
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer? Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Ann Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to zero.
Alderman Wolf, I assume you want that one to go on regular agenda.
Yeah, we're going on regular agenda, so we can talk about it. My question was going to be, is the folks from Light, do they want to talk about how they're going to stage this, or how they feel they're going to work with the abatement work that's going to get done during or prior to really they're doing a majority of the renovations? Do they want to say anything about that? Because I think that's something that I think we need to have confidence with that when we've got all the employees working in the buildings and how they feel like their, their setup's going to be between the, the abatement that has to happen with all the, the lead. Here, you guys sat out there, you should get a chance to say.
Yeah. John Campbell, Light Construction.
And I'm Tim Campbell with Light Construction.
Sitting down with Scott and Lane, in the environmental abatement contractor, about a week ago, we were able to discuss a lot of the elements of coordination and how we were going to tackle this with the facility staying open and also construction taking place. And we feel confident with Scott and conversations and Lane that it's very achievable and that we can limit the disruption or no disruption at all throughout the construction process. So that's kind of, I guess, the overview. I know getting into the abatement side, they are going to work night shift hours to open up the egress areas, which would allow those to then be open, and then they'll have two phases that we would come in after, once they are completely done. So it, Lane did a great job of setting up the phases and how it's all going to take place, and from a, I guess, bird eye view, it, it looked like everything should run pretty smoothly, so.
Does anybody else have any questions?
We were concerned about, you know, the abatement and the regular construction, but it actually worked out great in that the abatement will, they'll put up the temp walls, then they'll abate, nobody will be allowed in there. It'll all be negative pressure and have epifilters. And then, once everything is abated and sealed, the contractor walks in and it's all nice and clean. Ceiling's gone, specific drywall is gone, specific flooring conditions are gone. They still have additional demolition to do, but at least they're working in a nice, clean environment. So they were just able to kind of segregate this piece in the, in their bidding and then really focus in on what bidding they had left. We also have an allowance for unforeseen conditions for, you know, we opened this thing all up, and all of a sudden, we see some things, you know, we've got that accounted within the contract, under their contract, to handle these things and in a time and materials way. And then we've also got time in there for staff to move during the punch list. And, and so it's, you know, we will require everybody's patience, you know, because we're going to do this while we're all, you know, still working here. They've got a, they'll have an office up on the third floor, you know, with, so they'll be in close communication with Scott and Kevin. And so I, I think what, it actually worked out nicely in that the abatement drawings were more clear on these phases than my drawings, because I, my, the architectural drawings have just so much going on in them, but the abatements were nice and clean. You know, this is what we're going to do here. So that additional communication within the contract documents really helped everybody.
I just want to make sure everybody knew that, you know, trying to set this up and coordinate everything is not a small feat, and, you know, to have all that understanding upfront that that's going to be the biggest thing with all our employees in here, that that really has to be paramount, you know, concern of ours that that has to happen correctly.
The, they'll be testing by the, the environmental engineers, who wasn't able to make it tonight, but they'll be doing air sampling and testing as part of their engineering. And, and so that is an independent test along the way, especially at the end of each phase of, of abatement.
Great.
Communication will be very key between us and Batavia also, working with Scott. So we'll keep that open line of communication and hopefully be able to complete a project that you guys will be proud to come in and show off to the, the city.
Okay. Look forward to working with you guys.
And I'd just like to add again, this is a family-run business. My dad started the business back in 1980. We are now the third generation. John is my son. But again, we want to thank you for having the confidence in selecting Light Construction to move forward with your project. It sounds like it's a long time coming, and we're very excited to be a part of it. So again, Mr. Allen has all of our cell numbers. If there's anything that comes up, we will respond immediately to anything that arises. So we look forward to it, and thank you again. Thank you. I'd encourage you to look at the documents. You'll also see exterior work. We're changing around the entrance and how it, we're gaining more square footage for the building and zoning. So there, there, there's, and then we're doing a new monument sign, we're moving the police station, or the police, the, the man and the boy, the police sculpture, we're rebuilding this entrance. So there's a lot of pieces of the puzzle, or we're, and then he's bidding out the water main, and, you know, so there's, there's a lot of moving parts.
Thanks, Lane. Okay, so now we get back to the last three here, which, we'll start off with item 16.
We have 22-87, R authorizing execution of a contract for AHC Industries, Inc. for the interior environmental abatement project. Make a motion.
Second, Serone.
Motion on the second, any additional discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayassi? Malay?
Aye.
Uwer? Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Ann Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to zero.
Thank you. And then on to item 17, resolution 2288-R. Alderman Chantet?
R authorizing execution of an agreement with Train, U.S. Inc. for the City Hall Building Automation System Installation Project. Make a motion.
Second, Serone.
Motion on the second, any additional discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayassi? Malay?
Aye.
Uwer? Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Ann Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next is item 18, resolution 2289-R.
So that's rejecting the bid for the 2022 City Hall Rooftop Fall Protection Project. Make a motion.
Second.
Motion on the second, any additional discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayassi? Malay?
Aye.
Uwer? Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Ann Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to zero.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And look forward to lots of construction dust.
None.
None. Okay. I'll hold you to that, Lane. Up next is item 19, project status. Laura?
All right, I've got a few things. First, just to make everyone aware that because of the upcoming Labor Day holiday, our next city council meeting will actually be on Tuesday, September 6th. So just to get that on everyone's calendar. Finance Department is always very busy, but this time of year, we're at the point of looking at doing, start of the budget season. And for several reasons, many of which came up this evening, we've got a lot of unique challenges that are facing us at this time, supply constraints and, and rising costs. But also, you know, we've got the, the good news side of that with the increase in the sales tax that we have recently experienced with getting our local share from the online sales has been probably the largest contributor to that. So we're all beginning to do the projections for where we think 2022 will end up with regard to this year's expenditures and also planning for next year. But we're grateful that we have the new software to utilize, always, you know, a little bit of a learning curve for all of us getting used to using a new system. But I think that it's both easier to use from staff's perspective in putting the information that we need in there. But we've also had a lot of good feedback from residents that when they were wanting to research something online associated with a budget, that this software made it a lot easier for them to do that. In community and economic development, we have issued a few permits this week. One was for a speculative trucking, trucking facility that's going to be located at 1798 Hagaman Drive. As you know, we've got very few parcels of industrial property left here in the city of Batavia, so we're always happy to hear when yet another one is, is being developed. And then a couple of commercial permits that were issued, the Imagine Theater Phase One construction that they're doing, we issued that permit this week, and then also Mocha, the coffee shop on Independence Drive, we issued the permit for their construction as well. So things are moving along with some new businesses that we're expecting over there. In public works, you may see a consultant for the electric utility around town, they'll be here over the next month inspecting all of our power poles. The poles will be inspected for condition and will be inventoried to verify what equipment is attached to them, because we do charge for attachments to those poles. And so every once in a while, it's a good idea to go out there and do an audit to make sure that we know what is out there, what may be there and needing to be taken down off the pole as well, because it is now out of use. And the wastewater staff successfully completed a major improvement to our treatment plant aeration facility. They replaced diffusers within the tanks to improve aeration. The old diffusers had reached their end of life. Staff also had a meeting last week with the Batavia Environmental Commission and the Chamber of Commerce, making progress on the plans moving forward for the single-use plastic bag fee that we had a meeting previously about. We had been working with a local marketing group to come up with a budget for a informational campaign that we could use as a lead into adopting a fee for single-use bags. And so we'll be bringing that proposal back to you at our next committee of the whole meeting on September 13th. I've sent letters out to all of the retail establishments, 5,000 square feet or more, as we were kind of contemplating under the ordinance, letting them know that city council was contemplating whether to implement this fee and inviting them to be part of the discussion on September 13th, and hope to reach out to some of them personally to be able to invite them here to help us create a plan. And also, the suggestion was made at the meeting to reach out to the county. Certainly, you know, we, we sometimes look at things that we're doing here that we say, oh, wouldn't it be great if they implemented this at the state level, or at least at the county level? So I'm going to be reaching out to the county level and see if there's any interest there in implementing single-use bag fee. And then also reaching out to both St. Charles and Geneva to see if they might be interested in at least engaging on the informational campaign side of things to encourage people to change their behavior before we decide to implement a fee. And that's all I had, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Anyone have any questions? Anybody online? Okay, any others? All right. If not, then I will need a motion for us to go into executive session for the setting of price for land for sale and the setting of price for land for sale.
It's a move.
Second.
Motion by Malay, second by Connolly. Roll call, please.